Six oh one, call the meeting to order. We'll start at the moment of silent reflection.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. All right, Willie, you want to lead us in our roll call and interrogation forum?
Shane Davis.
Here.
Jeff Baer.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Birthday girl Jenny Roberts.
Hey, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna deviate, not really deviate, but we're gonna switch up the order tonight. We have Pete Vitara here from Electric Jet Aircraft. He's gonna do a brief presentation, business presentation on one of our new businesses. So come on up, Pete.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to share. My name is Pete Vitara, as you said, and I own Electric Jet Aircraft, and I'm also co-founder of a company called Leo Flight Corporation. We're developing what the name says, electric jet aircraft. And we have developed a propulsion system that uses little small electric turbines that we use in clusters to power everything from drones to jet packs, powered paragliders, and flying cars. We had a contract last year with DARPA, the Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency, for the DOD, developing both a jet pack and a powered paraglider, both of which flew. And right now, we are developing drone technology that is going to be deployed in Ukraine and other places around the world for both our military and allied militaries. So that is sort of the focus area of a lot of what we're doing on our electric jet. Leo Flight, I'll talk about that in a little bit too, but if we could, can we get that started, you think? Oh shoot.
Oh.
Sorry.
Can we typically how we put a document up there? Can you do that? Like, we show the G drive on the screen? Okay. I don't think, do you want to go see if they can see it?
I'll go check.
Okay.
Is it like a smart TV thing? Can you actually broadcast to us?
I'm not sure. I wouldn't recommend restarting that computer.
Is this a C one, C eighty-seven, R, or D twenty-nine?
What does it say? It just says.
That's just an absent.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Does that TV work? Is that a smart TV?
I.
I think so. It's a Samsung too, yeah.
Yeah, turn it on. If you could, I'll turn it.
Is the remote back there?
You just turn the power on, it should be able to send it.
It, I think it's been.
That's just the.
Okay, it's plugged in. I can't feel.
I don't think you're gonna have luck with that. That thing's kind of watered in.
There we go. Group effort today, guys.
Absolutely. You want me to drive it?
I know about DARPA.
Okay, so. All right, well, so I don't know how to go backwards all of a sudden. Let's see here. There we go, back. Okay. So I just acquired the old Hensinger Field slash Fuller Field slash Hannah Field slash Lakeview North Field on the north side of town over here. It is within city limits or town limits, I mean, so that deal just closed in mid-March, so just about a month ago. As I said before, drone and manned aircraft development is primarily our mission. As we get operations stable, we plan on doing some public events, probably do some invites out there, do some, you know, cookouts or something like that to bring at least the neighborhood and possibly open it up to everybody as things grow. And again, you know, it's my intention of being a meaningful part of the community and also to open opportunities for aviation and aerospace in the city. And also for the high school and students of all ages, really, it'd be really cool to be able to do some aviation type events, open people's minds up to what's possible. Just a couple pictures of the field. So that's looking north. You see Nestle and N T and N T K across the highway there, so it just, the field basically goes right up to that I sixty-nine. Couple shots of the interior. It was, when I bought it, it was a real mess. I cleaned it up quite a bit since it was left. So we swept it out and made it pretty nice. We're gonna be adding some insulation, doing heating and air conditioning, continually plant and control space. Should be really nice when it's finished, but it's still pretty decent now. It's nice enough that you guys are the ones that want to come out and take a look and see what we're doing. Some of what I'm doing there, again, this is our jet pack technology. It's an electric jet axis using clustered electric jets that we did with DARPA last year. It's got opportunity for both personal ownership and military and first responder kind of applications. We also developed a powered paraglider called the Canopy Jet, and that's a backpack thing, weighs about forty-nine pounds. Put it on, take off with a paraglider into the sky. We're gonna be flying those around quite a bit this summer. We also have developed sort of human drones for all intents and purposes. So we have this thing called the verti-cycle. That's a single person, personal drone, kind of a transport. It's also just a drone as well. So it's designed for both human lift as well as heavy cargo for transporting things, let's say, to and from shore to ships or our reason why we use that. And then we're also developing our jet drone technology, which is called ArcSteer, and we have a couple different sizes of those aircraft, but they're very small. They're, you know, will fit in your hand. And but the cool thing about them is they will, they will lift over twenty pounds of payload and fly at speeds of over a hundred fifty miles an hour. So they're very fast, they're very powerful, and they're very compact. And then this, if we are lucky enough to get sound, and I don't know if we're gonna get sound. I believe Steve sent this presentation.
Yeah.
So we're not taking more time looking at this, but it's a pretty cool video. We spent some money on the video, but it's just an overview of Leo Flight.
Oh. Don's. Heart's working.
It's not transferring.
I hear it. That's okay. We'll skip it. We got sound, we can hold video.
Yeah. I think you might want to look at the actual streets. I think you're off of the input. Yeah, we can see your cursor now. There you go.
Okay. It's still playing, but I don't know where it's playing. So this is the Leo Coupe. This is our flying car based on the same electric jet technology. It runs on two hundred little, little mini engines instead of like four for the drone or, you know, thirty-six for the jet pack. This runs on actually two hundred for that, and it's a three-seat flying car. Designed to fit in a two-car garage with another car. We have built a prototype. This kind of shows sort of the same tech, that's the jet pack and next to the Leo to kind of show the scale. The idea is a two hundred, two hundred fifty mile an hour flying car that will take you from the suburbs into the downtown area and back at a range of over two hundred fifty miles per charge. The FAA is right now creating legislation that will allow for this kind of aircraft by about twenty twenty-five, and it'll be relatively easy to learn how to fly. It'll be self-piloting. For the most part, you'll just tell it where to go and it stabilizes itself. Interior, single-seat pilot in front with two seats in the back. Right now, we can also do a side-by-side configuration, but this is sort of the air taxi configuration. You can kind of see what it would look like looking back into the seat and then forward from the backseat. You have a screen on the back of the pilot seat, and then you've got a transparent floor. Scott would like that from the helicopter days. So you can see down and up and around, so very airy, immersive feel. And then we're also developing what are called verti-stops, which are a charging system that would allow for both landings and recharging. So we'll be developing infrastructure as part of this. It doesn't need the verti-stop for landing or charging, but it's capable of, we're capable of using that for building tops and things like that where we want a little more established infrastructure for these. Otherwise, they can land on the, on the, on the ground. Okay, now here's this again. Let's see if we can make this fly. Oh, yeah, that's a terrible video, but that's the jet drone flying. That's the camera onboard the jet drone. That's a chase drone following the jet drone, but you kind of get an idea here, super fast. That's the canopy jet. Did some flying with this. We tested up in Alexandria last year and.
Hey Pete, were you, were you or somebody, were you at the football field a few days ago flying around?
No.
There was somebody doing that.
We were flying a paraglider at my field. Good Friday.
Okay.
He was flying around Friday night.
Okay.
So and then we've actually built, so this is our LX one prototype. So we built a propulsion prototype and flew this. This was at the Anderson Airport. And then we did a little manned liftoff as well. Just tethered at this point. We're still raising capital to do more flight testing, but we'll be just doing some testing out here. So it's real. It's not just pretty pictures. I mean, we built a skeleton that actually flies right now, so now we're just trying to raise the capital for the rest of the pull-out development. That's our quarter-scale model for the aircraft, so we'll be flying that around as well. That's from the, from the vision film. So. Where we're going in Hamilton. And appreciate you guys taking the time to listen, and my contact information is there. Feel free to reach out anytime. Love to invite you guys out to take a tour of the facility when we're fully set up, probably in the next month or so. We'll, we'll take a look and show you what we're doing and maybe show you some things in flight, so look forward to that. And we look forward to being good neighbors in Hamilton. We're excited about it. You have any questions? Anything? Thank you.
So the location is Old One Thirty-Six and Six Hundred West.
We're on Six Hundred South and Four Twenty-Five. Ish, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, down with Southside.
No, well over, across from their farms. Yeah, across from.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I'll run. What do you have there?
If they go from the street, which you don't, but if you went from the street all the way to the pond, basically, on the north end, it's twenty-seven.
The guy that lived there.
Well, over, he'd fly from here to Purdue to watch football games. Oh, yeah.
So, you know, the semis can't make that one corner.
Yeah, I know. Well, they come, they have actually used my thing to turn around, which is fine. We are thinking about maybe paving it at some point and possibly entertaining limited public use, you know? So if people wanted to schedule a flight to come in and take off or whatever, we'd have tie-down spaces. We'd have, have a fuel trailer with a pump on it, so we could actually refuel them. We have the potential to have an actual airport in Hamilton, so.
Yes. Does the FAA tell you what you can do, can't do? I mean, what if Jeff Baer wants to bring a twin-engine plane in?
If it'll, if it'll make the field, yeah, it's okay. It's legal. There's no real limitation on that because it's a private field. It's not a public airport. So it doesn't get any federal funds. It's just privately funded, so it's technically, it's not even on the maps. I'm trying to get it on the aviation charts, actually. But it's not on them now.
Yeah, because the, yeah, what was his last name? Yeah, because the guy across the street from, on the west side of Kirby.
Yeah.
His son was a pilot with US Airways United, and he had a plane there as well.
Paul Fuller.
Paul, that's who it was.
Yeah, Paul Fuller. Yeah, he used to fly a twin-engine out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which you could do, I mean, it's, I don't know that I, if you have big tires on it, I'd be fine with a grass runway like that. It's pretty smooth, but it can get soft when it's raining. So that's part of the reason I might, you know, over time, spend the money to pave a section of it at least, so we have a runway to touchdown.
You had no ball. He wouldn't care if he had tires on him.
Well, I've heard the rumors.
Yeah. I've flown with it several times, so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you again. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for your patience with our tech.
Oh, no.
Worked out great. Down in the end.
Worked out great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Pete.
Take care.
See ya. Do you want that map?
Yeah. Yeah. No, no, you're fine.
Yeah. All right, see you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It was first order of actual business approval of minutes from prior meeting. Those are on the Google Drive as well as copies here in the office. Do you have any changes, directions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March meeting. All in favor of adopting them, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Okay, clerk treasurers report.
Well, spend all the money, bought me a jet pack. Okay, let's start out with the general fund. As you all see, it's in very good shape. I don't have a whole lot to report here. We spent a, quite a bit of money this last month. We had some bills that came up. Scott spent quite a bit on info with lift stations and updating what we needed. We had a payment on the McCarty drain. Park department, we had to pay eighty-five dollars, or eighty-five thousand to Predix, just a bunch of bills. Yeah, so, you know, that's for a lot of it went. Like I've asked before, I've got this list. You've all got it as a voucher, and anyone wants to take a look at any questions about it, I'd be glad to try to answer them. One thing on here that I might bring up. They bought, they bought a smart dummy, forty-three hundred dollars, so.
I think they were, I think they talked about that in the last.
Yeah. Yeah. Bought a door to practice breaking in, so indeed, so we gotta have the equipment.
Yep.
That's all I have.
All right, you have a motion to approve the claims as presented from March.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do you have a second to approve the claims from March?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of accepting as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carried unanimously. All right, department reports. We have those on our Google Drive. Mark is not here. Is anybody on Zoom? Don, before I say Mark's not here. Nobody? All right. Mark's in the report, it's on the Google Drive, and then you go into. Judge is not on Zoom either. We have Judge's report, and then Aaron, and Aaron's here from the park.
Aaron's here? Good evening. Don't really have much to add other than what's in my report. Playground installers be here a couple weeks, which is exciting. Everything's ready for them, so when they get here, they hit the ground running. Hopefully, the weather stays like this and they can get it knocked out. Anybody have any questions for me?
Are you excited? Are the roads open now?
Yes. I know the guys in the bro shop are really excited.
Everybody is, yeah.
I saw they started skimming today on what, Diamond Four?
Yep. Yep, so they should be done by the end of next week with that.
Just that Ivan or?
Just that.
Just the Ivan? Because one of me days.
Twenty-nine. Yep.
But you have all done by then, or?
We're just gonna do that one.
Just that one to start with this ring?
Yep. Yeah, give us a little more flexibility and then we'll revisit it in the fall.
You think? Questions for Aaron?
Thanks. Thank you.
President.
Yeah. Oh. Okay.
And she asked if the zone, does the zoning allow for this type of approach? It creates a scene.
The air, or the airs, I mean, the airstrip is already there, but I think Carol's question is, does that mean automatically it's owned for business? Okay.
It's grandfathered.
Okay. No problem.
Did she hear that, Don?
There is, it seems like there's a little bit of delay. If we hear more from attendees on Zoom, we can interject. So if you hear something else that they're done, let us know. Okay, Hannah's not here, but we have her planning department report. Scott, do you have anything you want to add to Hannah's planning?
No, no, no.
Okay. Then in that case, it's time for your report, Scott.
Well, that's coming up. So first of all, the good news is Pendleton Avenue was open today. They had some false starts. We thought we'd be open last Friday, but there was some problems with striping and paving, so, but it's open. The striping right now is temporary. The striping operators, it's first time we'd ever operated that machine, and it showed. So we stopped work, and they agreed to put down temporary stripe to get the road open. Let's see. Doing this off of memory. The other thing is the two public information meetings on how Pendleton's handling growth, I think we're very successful. The second one was very clear that people are gonna want us to do some certain things, which you're all aware of, aware about. And what's another thing on there? Get my slide.
She's going there. No, it's. The US thirty-six project enhancing the pedestrian crossing at the Pendleton Heights High School parking lot.
Yes, that one. So made an executive decision to invest more heavily in that crossing, so it'll be, they call it a hawk, which I think is a proprietary name. But basically, it'll have arms that'll come out over the stairway thirty-eight, where kids are crossing right there at the Mendix from the parking lot, so there'll be an arm from the other side. They press the button, it flashes red. And if you're a car coming either direction and you don't realize that you're supposed to stop, then you should be driving a car. The ossuary is set. We're conducting landscaping as we talk. They took a lot of dirt out there today because we're building a burb behind it. And Don, if you could slide down, it'll show the the ossuary. See, see the dirt behind it. They're building that burb, and then we're landscaping and changing the grade a little bit behind it to enhance drainage and get it set for if we add another ossuary. And today, you're also gonna talk about the fees for that. And then, what was the last thing?
Paying project.
Paving project, so not as big a paving project as last year, but the highlight of it is we were using community crossings once again. We're gonna do a lot of in-depth patching on Angle Road, as we all know. That gets a lot of use. It's a high vis, what I call a high-visibility road, so we're investing heavily in the resurfacing of Angle Road. And before they resurface, they'll go in with those places where it's really bad. They'll go in, dig all the way down, take all the old pavement out, and still build it back up and patch it. So those are the, those are the highlights. Does anybody have any questions?
No question, but I've had a lot of comments, positive comments about the ossuary.
That's where.
A lot of people are really interested in it.
Yeah.
I think it's good, and I think we'll be doing that one.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. I think there's obviously some pent-up demand with family members. Um, back at Angle Road, real quick, Angle Road is only gonna be worked on after school. It lets out for the summer, and they need to be down by the time school is back, so. Any calls on that? That's what, that's, that's the plan. The rest of paving, they've got a lot longer, a lot larger window to do that.
Great, right? Okay, old business twenty-three oh six adopting amended economic development rider. If you remember the last one, that is really an info incentive that we are just signing off on. Basically, they give an incentive if you have a one-megawatt customer, that is dispersed directly to that customer. It doesn't really come through us at all. That accurate, Scott?
Yep.
Any other comments about that stemming from last month's discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve twenty-three oh six.
So moved.
You have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Right, I have a motion and a second to approve twenty-three oh six. All in favor of twenty-three oh six as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, twenty-three oh seven. This is the, oh, sorry, this is the unused vacation time. Extenuating circumstances, situation ordinance. Any other comments, questions, concerns stemming from last month on that? If you don't have any other comments, I'll.
I have a question on this. So just to clarify, I know we did discuss this, but it says in here, the request to carry over unused vacation times, like if I'm just like, why am I gonna take a vacation this year? All you do is move like you and say, hey, can I just?
No, we have to be, so because we have a policy, if you gotta use it or lose it.
Yeah.
So a lot of people save the days up for Christmas.
Yeah.
But that's also part of the snow season, so Ricky and I got hit with that.
Yeah.
And so it was a lesson learned that that's a problem with the policy.
Yeah, I just said to the request to carry over unused vacation benefits has to be approved by you guys. I didn't, that's why I didn't know if I, if I just didn't want to use a week, but I was gonna take a big vacation next year.
No.
Can I? Okay.
It's really.
It was just a, just a generic question.
It's really at the town's discretion, like we called you in to use it. So if you save vacation and you're at home celebrating Christmas with your kids, and then we have an ice storm, and we say, listen, we're down a guy, if you can come in, we would appreciate the help. That's really the situation, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, there's no other.
Does it also include, let's say?
You request vacation, but there's already a certain amount of people off.
That could be.
So, so then you can go to you and say, listen, I asked for this week, I had no other time to use. I'm requesting that week to be forward on to next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, that, yeah, that would be a circumstance too, or it's mostly at the end of the year.
Yeah.
I, I do think there's a time, we've talked about this for a while, that we need to go over. Policies. Some, some other innovative ways that. Look at vacation time. With the employees and the executive team.
Living document, we gotta update that.
I've got notes all over, ready to change.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve Twenty-three Oh Seven as presented.
So moved.
Say again.
I have a motion in a second for Twenty-three Oh Seven, unused vacation time. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. New business. Okay, Twenty-three Oh Eight, Peddlers Ordinance. So our original document on this dates back to twenty fifteen, I don't really know if that's the original, that's the most recent one, I guess I should say. But as things have changed, we have split this into two proposed ordinances for adoption. The amended peddler permit, and then also the following one after this, which is Twenty-three Oh Nine, Mobile Food Bender Permit. And so this is just kind of a situation we're keeping with the times and things that are changing. I went over it with Chief R. of the day, and. His office and stay are the ones that originate the Peddlers Permit. The Peddlers Permit typically applies to door-to-door salespeople, solicitors, that are selling windows, roofs, pest control, that sort of thing. Anything food-related is pulled out of the Peddlers Permit, and now is directed into the concessions and food truck ordinance. And those permits are generated through the town office and not the police department. We have questions or comments, concerns, discussion? These have, both of these ordinances have been kicking around for about six months, while we went through a bunch of revisions. And tried to make sure that we were as thorough as we can, and also looking out for all the interested parties on this. All right, if you don't have any questions, I'll entertain a motion for Twenty-three Oh Eight Peddlers Permit.
So moved.
You have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Twenty-three Oh Eight, the Peddlers Solicitors and Transient Merchants within the Town Ordinance. All in favor of adoption, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Let's just do first read tonight, do you think? Let's, we'll do first read tonight, and we'll wait until May to the second read. Twenty-three Oh Nine. This is the Mobile Food Bender. Ordinance. Have any comments, questions, concerns on that? Jeff, should we add the word concessions into the title of this, or do you find that unnecessary?
It's not necessary, but it can clarify for some agreements, so they know what it's about.
So the title, we'll amend the title. In ordinance of the town of Pendleton, Madison County, Indiana, establishing an ordinance governing mobile food and concession vendors, as an amendment to Chapter One Hundred and Eleven of the Code of Ordinances. Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns?
Um, yeah. The permits will be coming through what department?
The Town Planning Department.
Okay, and then they're going to be during that, to issue the permit, they're gonna, I know it says in here all licenses and everything. But they're, they're gonna make sure about the license through Madison County Health Department, and, I mean, because there are food trucks out there that won't have those.
Right.
But so they will make sure those are all checked. Okay. And then I also saw that these vendors will be on either closed streets or an area that's not. Because what concerns me too is I've seen food trucks that are parked right in front of a established restaurant.
So the way that this is written is in order to have a food truck on a public street or public parking lot. The street either has to be closed, or they have to be part of a special event, like a special permitted event, such as Fall Festival, or the. Farmer's Market, that sort of thing, those are special event permitted events. And so mobile food vendors are fine during those. In order to, if you're going to put a food truck on State Street, that would have to be part of a special event permit, or State Street would have to be closed. If you're going to go on Pendleton Avenue, Pendleton Avenue would have to be closed, or you have to be part of a special event.
I understand what you're saying, but it's a definition of special event, if we're parking a truck out here the next month.
A special event is permitted through the planning department, the special event permit that they generate. There's an application, you have a proof of insurance, all of those things. And really, the point of a special event permit is to make sure that we don't have fifteen people trying to have an event the same weekend, and trying to kind of say. Okay, this one applied, this is the special event, they're having a food truck, that's great, then there's nothing else going on that weekend.
If you're a special event, having a food truck, that's a question.
Yes, yeah.
That's all of it.
Well, I mean, that's a, they have applied for that permit through the planning department.
My concern is if they are gonna be on State Street, the businesses that do our established restaurants. I, I feel we need to have some protection for them to where these food trucks aren't parked right in front of the bank. I'm just thinking.
Or the stable.
Well, there's no parking from the stable, but I think there should be, there should be some language in there that they have to be a certain. Distance away from an established restaurant that's open. If it's closed. I don't have an issue with it. But I think it should be a certain amount, because food trucks will park right in front of a business.
Jeff, what's your?
We could put distance requirements from an establishment holding the Madison County Health Department restaurant.
That's just my opinion.
No, I, I understand where you're at. We had talked about at one point having sign-offs, like we've tried different mechanisms, and, no.
You could do a. You could do the distance. Also not allow, you could allow it, let me back up. You could require the restaurants to provide regular business hours. And then you can't be within the distance, a certain number of feet. During those hours.
That's more than fair.
Me too.
And if you're closed, then I don't have an issue with parking right in front.
Right.
I mean, do they not have to put their location of where they're wanting?
No, they, they do, as part of the special event, they have to designate where that would be.
That's just like something in the discretion of the planning department, to know that that's, or do you think it needs to be that specific with the distance?
It's not, we're.
We can't, yeah.
It's gotta be.
You know what, if I could.
Go for it.
So, so you asked a really important question, which was part of structuring and sort of. Another thing, other discussions for us, what's a special event? The especial event is anytime there's gonna need to be. Any one of the town departments have to be involved for that event to happen. And it could be as simple as the police department has to do tax. But a lot of the special events, the street department has to get involved, the street. Trash has to be picked up or something. So that. The special event is just a more complicated event. This would apply to a more simple situation. Where it's just really a food truck, whatever.
That's, that's really why I said, so that special event application come right this week is actually just a food truck parking on State Street. It's all this.
So that's the noticeable, I, I'm gonna flip the side here, though. That's the noticeable difference for us, is that we see it as a food truck on State Street. The businesses that are participating in that permitted event, I think view it differently as a opportunity to. Generate some more traffic for them. I think that that's what they're trying to do with that, by applying for that to be a special event, and it be. Built as such, I think the people that are participating in that feel like this is more than just a food truck on State Street.
So that is a good example of what I'm trying to say, so that, if there's, there is gonna probably be something where there's a food truck on State Street right out here. But that's gonna end up being a special event. If it was. In a depot parking lot. Now, now, it's. At the safe barricade off, that's a closed public area, they could be there. Not necessarily be a special event. It could, but maybe not, it all depends on how benign it is.
I'm, I'm all for attracting people, like food trucks coming down, and, and I understand where the other businesses are coming from. We need, we want more people coming into our shops, one hundred percent agree with that. But I, I just wanna try to protect the businesses that are permanent here, and not have a food truck parked right in front of their front door on the Wednesday at five o'clock. Yeah.
And it would have to be, I would hope that in the spirit of all things that we do, that people would exercise like good neighbor. Discretion in some of this, and say, you know, I, I know that this business is open today, I know this business is closed today. I mean, there, there's a little bit of that. You know, spirit of camaraderie and cooperation and neighborliness in this, I would, I would hope, with anything that's gotta apply for as a special event permit.
I'm not saying it needs to be added or anything in here, I think we could pass the ordinance, approve the ordinance. And then in the future, if we are starting to see an issue, we could come and amend the ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely.
But. Protecting the business people.
I've got a potential addition to the general regulations.
Okay.
What we can add is.
Sure.
Jay. Mobile food vendor should not be located within length of business that A possesses a valid Madison County Health Department permit to operate a restaurant. And B, open during the frigging business hours, because those hours are provided by the business, Pendleton Police Department. If you're never open on Sundays, somebody must have been. Been urged, right?
Jeff, I got a one here. On private property, we're not charging people. Okay. Let's say, for example, Tyler Barton rents underneath his drive up here to a food truck. Or lets him set up there. That's right across the street from the bank. And on private, we'd have no governing process on that. I think we all pay them a dollar.
They would have to obtain the, oh, no, they wouldn't. Sorry.
If a person, you do have regulatory powers as a town council, or someone that engages in commerce in the town. If a person, person just wants to set up a cooked burgers in the parking lot, can't do anything about that necessarily. But if someone is going to starting business, or putting business, go in commercial concern, on even private property, we discussed this in supportive meetings. And I, I can't remember how it came out, we've had a few. But you can regulate that through the permitting process, that. Operate a business with. You do have regulatory authority in situations like that, like, you don't have to. I think we, yeah, so. So let's talk about like one scenario. So the scenario is you're having a wedding on your property, you can use it as a truck to be a case. Yeah. The scenario is you're O'Reilly's, and you wanna generate business on Saturdays. So you bring in a food truck, and you hand out three. Kona ice cones, right? Now you're getting a little bit into it, but I, I don't think something that's on their property is. If we regulate it, I don't know. Regulate, I don't think you could regulate if you're handing, you're giving it out, that like, or my law firm was put it. Okay, well, I didn't sell hot dogs. Yeah. Yeah. That, that, you know, that's another scenario, right? Now you're. You're pulling into a private property. A hundred dollars, food vendor pays the property owner, so.
I just wanted to raise that point, I'm fine with the ordinance as written. And we can just do, you know, see what the future holds for us, that there are some complaints about certain situations that we can look into further.
So if somebody did do that, when would they actually?
I think.
Yeah. What about clients? Hamburgers under their pavilion during the Jeep Festival, they have all those sensors on.
They would be covered by the special event permit that the, that the Jeep Fest pulls for their event.
So, so my question to Jeff is, when somebody parks a food truck on the private ground, starts selling hamburgers? This is, it has to be licensed. Do they take money? They can take donations, but if they, here's my venue of hamburgers. Four dollars. But when does it, could be in a food truck? That would be through the planning department, I think, have an improvement in location. Right, so that, so, okay, it's coming back to me, so that would be covered. And if they, let's just say they do it on that Saturday, it starts to be pretty potential. Different license to it. Yeah, right, that. Then, then I think it starts to. Their operating business.
Right.
The residential property, which is not.
Correct. So do we want to add Jeff's provision? I'm fine adding that now, I mean, it's up to you guys, I'm not making the rules. This is, I am just trying to get this done, because it's been kicking around in the, the background for literally eight months now, so.
I would like to see it in there, but I, I would defer to the other board members on what their opinion is, and, and if everybody feels like it's as good as it's written now, then I will be okay with that.
I agree.
You say as it's written.
Without adding, without.
Without adding the.
We can, I can have this in front of you to do for May. That's next. What would do it for? When you guys make a motion, I suppose, I'm not in the order, just say yes. When you vote on the amendment?
What, I mean, what other towns have for this?
It's a, it's a complicated situation, not complicated, it runs the game of. Do whatever you want to absolutely no food trucks, unless it is a town sponsor event, like a, something where they do shut the street down, and it's a whole. I mean, it's a large scale event.
Yeah, I'm not against food trucks, they do bring people, and, and it, it, it can be kind of fun to go up and try different things. I just wanna try to protect the established, you know, restaurants.
And to go a step further, just protect the established restaurants, but also protect the public from not have, I mean, if you have a food truck on State Street, that people aren't crossing the street unsafely, that we're not, we don't have people lined up into the street. I mean, all of those safety concerns are really what part of this is, this ordinance is about also.
I mean, I'm kind of with Steve here, I'd like to see Jay involved in that, the way it just protects a business, just so many feet away, that way they're not blocking the front door, because. People will do it just to do it. I think we need to add, I, I think we need to add.
Okay, so the way this is, it's.
We'll just add Jay, whatever.
Right.
How many feet?
It's four hundred feet for a special event, which is considered one block. So do you want? A hundred bucks?
I, I mean. So from the bank, that would.
Parkings by eighteen feet? Yeah, if I remember right, so it's. Five. An hour.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't wanna get crazy with it by any means, but I, you know, I'm just thinking, what's beside the bank on both sides, maybe, you know, it's like two businesses away. Yeah. On each side, so whatever that. On each side, so whatever that.
You could go fifty feet from either the end of the property.
And the end of the business property.
Just as long as you can, you people can see the front of the restaurant and have access to.
Right.
That's, that's all I'm asking.
I would say fifty feet, especially here, that way we're not.
You're you're at least two margins.
Okay, fifty feet from sides, the property. Boundaries.
Yeah, I would say end of property.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion for twenty-three oh nine with the amendment of the letter J. Fifty feet from the edge of property of an existing rest, of an existing restaurant that is open.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second for the amended version twenty-three oh nine, mobile concession, food and concessions vendors. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried unanimously. Okay, the CDM Smith contract amendment, Scott, I'm gonna let you talk about that.
So, um, this is amendment where we only do twenty percent of the others coming through MCOG federal funds. This is. There's three phases to the construction. This is US thirty-six. So phase one is really in dot part and they're gonna go in and add the travel weight and prepare. The ground, the graves, everything for um our lighting, our streets. Our trails and sidewalks. And then. Phase two is when we eventually, hopefully, which I'm sure we will. Construction money from the vet eighty-twenty split to the, to build those, put in the lights. Put in the trails, put in sidewalks, that sort of thing. That is not originally part of these ones. Some of that, the sidewalks are. Phase three is a trail that connects the sidewalks trails along thirty-six. And takes it over the legal grain there between dentist office and Pizza Hut and connects to. Hayden Way and then Hayden Way will have a trail that connects it to the. The sidewalks along Water Street. The whole intention of that is to get the kids that are going to the park more to the. Get them office thirty-six, put them. Towards the parks. That would be phase three. So what this amendment does is when they design this, they have it, it's all electronic. Everything is designed together, so it fits, right? So you don't got, you don't have sidewalks going like this or elevations that look like this. Then they split three sets of plans. Phase one. Because it looks like separate bidding, separate, some way separate. This is amendment to separate the plans into three separate bidding. Thirty-six, basically. Yeah, somewhere around there.
Any questions for Scott for the phasing out for the CDM amendment? A motion to approve the amendment for CDM Smith contract amendment for US thirty-six project.
So a motion, Jeff.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the contract amendment for US thirty-six project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, cemetery fees, really, this is a little bit of a misnomer because it is actually just the fees for. The culinary ossuary spaces. We kind of got these to you late today, um as we talked through it with Tracy, the utility office. Who is the person that's in charge of selling these spots, these spaces and working with the families. So as you can see, that's the fee structure. With a four hundred dollar open and close fee associated. These fees do not include the earns. The niche spaces, um those can be a hard sided earn or what they refer to as a satin earn. Um and then the ossuary spaces are just a satin style bag earn. Any questions, comments, concerns about the ossory spaces? The reason this is really gonna serve as an amendment to twenty-eighteen dash eleven ordinance, which was the cemetery fee schedule. Until we can get the full ordinance redone, hopefully for May's meeting. Um so tonight, all we're doing is really adding this fee structure to that existing amendment or that existing ordinance. Um so that we can go ahead and sell these spaces. Engraving is not included in these fees. That would be through the vendor ICA at this point. Um Scott, anything else to add on this?
So just a, so on opening and closing on the ossuary. So if you don't have an opening and closing because of you're having a ceremony, so. You just drop off the urn and you don't care when it's placed.
If you have like a vault middle service.
Yeah, then. There's no opening and closing, but if one of our guys has to be there because you're having a ceremony, place it. So it's gotta open it and then it's gotta close it. So that's the two hundred dollars and then. And then if it's past normal hours and it's snowing out dinner at the bottom. So anything. Over two hours or anything. After hours. On Saturday or Sunday. Um there's an extra fee on that. Two hundred fifty dollars.
That's not a minute. It just says there's an after hours open closing fee may apply for services that go later than four P M or occur on Sundays.
Yeah, so if it's a, if it's ossuary, it's an infant, no. Yeah. The ordinance will have that the town manager can waive the fee or reduce the fees in extraordinary situations.
And that would include the pawper situation with the township.
With the ordinance, I'm kind of saying this half-heartedly, but. Can, does it have to be an earn, like a, an earn, or can somebody just come with a Folgers can? It can be any.
It can be anything.
Any container.
Container.
But, okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be like a sealed urn or any.
No, it didn't have to be.
To go in the, to go in the the bulk ossuary space, so it has to be a bag, because it has to be labeled, correct?
So, okay.
If it's in the niche space, that can be what you can be as creative as you want to be, as long as it's contained in like.
Yeah, hit us with a scenario, hopefully. We've already talked it through.
No, I'm just like, somebody, hey, here's Grandma Pearl. I never knew her and they, she's in a, uh, you know, Folgers can.
So there is a limit um on the niche spaces. Those can accommodate two. Now, if you.
Plus the space requirement.
There's also an opportunity possibly, we're waiting to get the actual dimensions from ICA, that if you did a box style earn. That you could potentially get four in the um line M or row N. There may be room for that. We're waiting to find out the actual volume metric situation on that. Um but really, the capacity on all of these is one or two.
And then you don't have to have the etchings. You don't wanna do that. That's, basically, that's gonna be cost plus our time. It's just cost plus our time.
A deed, when you buy that. We don't call them deeds anymore.
There's been that recent court case, what would we do? It's called something else, but it's, it's ours, it's ours. They don't.
They don't.
They don't get.
Own it, I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
What do we call them now, Willie? They're not deeds, right?
Certificate.
That that just changed recently.
Yeah.
Give me ninety-nine year lease.
Okay, um, any other discussion for culinary and ossuary fee schedule? If not, our hand motion to include this in the twenty-eighteen dash eleven ordinance.
Second.
Can I say one thing? Scott and I know we need to be careful on this pawper deal because we're talking people in Paul Creek Township or whatever that. Uh we pay for, that. County pays for it, but we gotta be careful not to open it up and let the reformator get involved. We don't wanna start burying their people.
Town show. Prestige, okay, came out with a scenario.
Well.
We've got into that before.
We have a little bit, I mean, I expect to have a fully written ordinance by the May meeting. We can include a reference to the townships and exclude the the reformator, that's what we need to do to get around that. But for now, the main concern is to get this approved so that Tracy can begin to sell these spaces. Because the community is demanding that we have, that we start selling them sooner than later. So, um. If you're okay leaving that out there kind of dangling for thirty days or whatever.
Yeah, as long as we spell it out.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, oh, we did, we had a motion in a second. Okay, all in favor of including this in twenty-eighteen dash eleven? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, now we have to open the public hearing. For resolution R twenty-three dash zero three, which is an additional appropriation for South Madison Fire Protection Territory. The actual transaction of this happened a while ago. Um a transfer of a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the town's lit draw to. The South Madison Fire Protection Territory. This is really um. Just documentation that the town needs, that we approved that appropriation. Y'all, okay?
Sorry, sorry.
So, uh, that's what this is. So I need a motion. Yeah, I like the teacher over here. Alright, I need a motion in a second to approve this appropriation and then we can close the public hearing. But first, I think I have to ask if there's any public input.
Yes.
Okay, is there any public input on this appropriation? Okay, if anybody online? Okay. We have a motion in a second for additional appropriation. It's already been completed, but this is just the documentation.
I uh make a motion.
Second.
Oh, close the public hearing and then we'll do the motions. Okay, um, public hearing closed. Is that all I have to do, Jeff? Okay. Okay, so now the public hearing is closed. Motion in a second.
Motion.
All in favor of approving the appropriation as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Any public comments online? I think that the public um meeting was great on Tuesday. I think we're gonna get some more feedback on May the seventeenth. You know, it was a great opportunity to show plans that the town has made kind of in a time when. Um we weren't really gathering publicly, so it was important to be able to go through those documents. Um in a public way that they probably should have been presented before now, but just we weren't able to do so safely. Um so we welcome all the feedback from the people that came and I am expecting more of that feedback on the seventeenth of May. I know all of us at least were in one of them or watched on Zoom. Do you guys have anything else to add?
I just want to add one thing. I know you're working on this with the advisory board. We just need to make sure what you're telling them is what Scott's telling them, that we're consistent in what we're telling.
We probably need to get that.
That's my point, yeah, yeah.
We're trying to keep that going because I don't think, I don't think Tim came to the first. Cause Fred was at the fire meeting. I just, I mean, I think we just, on my side, I mean, he's very transparent. As township residents, you need to look at pros and cons.
Yep.
Um I think there's a lot of pros, but. I know a couple of comments on the Falcone's Facebook page. There's one particular.
All of this is so preliminary at this point. I mean, so we get the financial data, I, none of us are making educated guess on that.
And and I told them, there's a lot of studies that have to go into it. And then no matter what the advisory board in town decides. The community is gonna have to vote through. So it'll be, it's, I mean. It's an interesting time and I think the town, they proactive and explaining their road plan. Has triggered other people thinking, because the first meeting, there was one person that asked Scott about. But there really wasn't much discussion about that. And then this meeting, there's a lot of people here.
And that is on, that meeting, the second one that we had here on Tuesday night, where there was a lot of public feedback. That is on YouTube now. Um and the public feedback is included in that. Um and so if anybody wants to go back and revisit the comments that were made at that, they're more than welcome to do so.
And Doc actually, or Doc and Kelly, I need to talk with Scott. So we'll do that.
Good deal.
The only other comment on it is, um, we're looking at my cemetery. And they sent a map out and, you know, the map's kind of tough to read and you don't really have any points of reference.
But resist. At our cemetery?
Yeah, okay. When I went out and met with Aaron, emailed him. She was able to pull up, it looks like the map. And she could pull up and then she makes a note, said, okay, this is here. And you need to drive through in this stones on one side, this is on the other. Is there any way that could be interactive where you can just go on? And look up money to see what's open?
So we're, we're moving that way.
Okay.
So that's a, I didn't, went in my brief, but that's now Aaron. The street department and the Saxon have access to the map. Up there at the barn. The problem is when they get too far from the barn, then it's the connection. So whatever they download, that's, that's what we have. Because they have to have different situations. Look at the map and stand on the ground. Look at various options. It'll show lots that are, the reserve lots that are. So, and so we're, we're getting there, right? It's one step at a time. One of the things we need to do is, well, there's a lot of things that need to be done. I'll just make the difference on that. But there's been a, since eighteen twenty, we have, heard this a lot, is that the town always operated this at a.
Cash positive or break even, yeah.
Break even. We have not even close to breaking even. No money's been set aside for paving the roads, that's a hundred thousand dollars. We've gotta prepare the, it's being farmed down, because the. Be the west side is starting to fill up. I forget the numbers, but you'd be surprised how much is not left. That's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars. There is no perpetual fund. I did some rough calculation using engineering math and not accounting math. That fund should be around five million dollars. There is no fund, so it's zero. So the town has not been operating the cemetery. At break even, it's been running in a massive. That's our situation.
And we had paperwork that was destroyed on the old park. Scott and I have talked about having a company come in.
Yeah, so radar, we need to do radar. We think we've got some plots on the east side, on the old side that are open, available. So, and.
So, yeah, that's a goal of ours, along with the paving situation. Any other public comment? Anybody up here?